We have a quorum and we are going to continue. Number C1, action item, the only action item this evening. BTA for approval of technology purchases to support student learning through new instructional practices. This came before CNI September 11th for?
Consideration.
Motion please.
Okay, this is a doozy. Hang on everyone. I move that the school board authorize the superintendent to execute purchase orders through RFP number 07792 with Dell Thornburg for a total not to exceed amount of $550,000 over fiscal years 2018-19 in the form of the order requests attached to the board action report with any minor additions, deletions, and modifications deemed necessary by the superintendent and to take any necessary actions to implement the purchase orders.
I second the motion.
Okay, and I might add that what is showing up on your screen is the last action item on firearm safety that we did pass unanimously, I'm happy to say. In any event, we have just heard this motion. Who is presenting this evening? We had a robust conversation during intro, so I trust we'll make it short, and this is on the web.
Yes. So this purchase, as was mentioned, is in support of the implementation of high school revisioning and the implementation of the 24 credit graduation requirement. As you know, many of our teachers have been participating in professional development and the use of instructional tools like technology and order to be able to teach in longer instructional blocks, deeper learning, in preparation for implementation of schedule changes for the 1920 school year. Also noted in the board action report is information that speaks to the fact that as students, as teachers implement this professional development, it gives students the ability to meet the new state-adopted educational technology standards. So this is really in support of the teachers' ability to apply their new learning in terms of use of instructional technologies.
Questions, comments, concerns from my colleagues? Director Burke and then Director Patu.
Thank you for presenting. One question. I know that this was carefully thought out and there's a lot of engagement with the building leaders around how they shaped their technology plans. Were those conversations coupled to the idea of a modified seven schedule or some type of alternate high school schedule?
Yes, it was. However, understand that what we're really wanting to do is change high school instructional practices to better prepare our students for post-secondary experiences. Many of our high schools are already teaching in longer instructional blocks. They modified current schedules. So this actually supports current efforts and future goals as we move forward to changing schedules for the 1920 school year.
Director Patu and then Director DeWolff.
Is this for all high schools?
All of the comprehensive high schools. Yes, it is actually for all high schools in support as they submit their plans for review and approval by our central office.
Not for middle school, it's just for high school?
Correct, not for middle schools, this is for high schools.
Okay, thank you.
I just had a question. This is a contract which will be with Dell and Thornburg, and we have a report that was created or funded by Dell and it's called the Principles for Effective Digital Learning. Do you feel like we're going to have any? What's the right word? Conflict of interest?
I'm not, I'm going to have to defer to John Crowell to help answer that particular question.
Well, he's coming to the box. It was pointed out during public testimony that in the board action report, it references two different costs, $520,000 and $550,000. Do we have any feedback on that, or is that considered a Scrivener's error, Mr. General Counsel?
I can speak to that. So the calculations add up to approximately $520,000, but what's in the line item is actually not to exceed $550,000. So it gives a little bit of flexibility in the purchase, but so the actual amount for this bar, board action report, is $550,000.
Is it $550,000 or not to exceed $550,000?
Not to exceed $550,000.
Thank you. Mr. Crowell, could you address the Dell piece and an apparent conflict of interest?
Right, and I, that's addressed in the published document. When we did the request for proposals for a standard computer, so that went out to bid, when Thornburg responded, they offered 30 days of professional development along with their response as an added to what we were purchasing or the contract that we were going into because they recognized, rightly so, that when we roll out technology, professional development's important. So when we were reviewing that, and they won the contract regardless of that, but when we had the 30 days of professional development, we were like, well, what are our needs for professional development? So Dr. Kenosha and I were like, we need, you know, what the board had been asking for, a theory of action, you know, what's our research behind it? So the research is actually not from Dell or not from Thornburg. They actually hired Advanced Learning Partners who is helping with our professional development, and they got a doctor of education who's a known researcher named John Ross who put together the research. So really, it's pretty, it's not connected to Dell, it's connected to the professional development that we're doing.
Director DeWolff again, please.
Yeah, just as a follow-up. So what we're, what we are likely moving toward action for, if we're going to approve this, is is it the adoption of that document with those seven principles because that's outlined here within this bar? So just trying to see how?
No, no. The research, this is just specifically a purchase to support the revisioning plan. The document is just, just what it is to kind of help us, if we're going to do professional development, what's kind of the anchor of our professional development? We're really trying to get what's the appropriate way to use technology in the classroom, and that's helping along with the ed tech standards. Those are going to be what we consider our foundation documents, but you know, they're foundation, they're not the specifics.
Okay, cool. And I know my only follow-up comment is that, understand that we're just, we're just here to either approve this $550,000 fiscal cost, but I just want to raise that, at least that document as it is, the Principles for Effective Digital Learning doesn't really touch on race or equity, and so if we're going to move forward on any more documentation, I just hope we're more thoughtful about including those topics. Thank you.
Other questions, comments, concerns? Director Burke?
Thank you, Director DeWolff, for bringing that up. I think this was one of the topics that was discussed at the ITAC Information Technology Advisory Committee, and I share what I think I heard as your concern. I'm comfortable going on record that I am not completely in alignment with these seven principles as our guiding principles, board-approved guiding principles. I think that this document has some, some interesting, relevant information, but I think it also has some conflicting information within it, and so it should be treated as a resource. It should not be treated as?
Policy.
Policy or guiding principles in any way.
Seeing no further comments, questions, concerns? Excuse me, Director Pingam.
When we look at the cost for 24, I gotta go back to the front, I was trying to see if I could find it in the supporting documents, 50 per laptop for imaging? Is my understanding that it means like the, what you're going to put on the computers or all the computers have the same software? Do we then, when we put these computers out to pasture and we have to wipe them clean, I assume, do we do that ourselves or do we have to then contract that out to someone else? In other words, is there a way we can eventually do our imaging ourselves?
We do do our imaging ourselves, but part of the purchase process, it's much more efficient with the brand-new computers to get them image and they're all set up, ready to go. They're actually put in carts and it's a turnkey solution to deliver them. And then when we do, do eventually dispose of computers, the hard drives are wiped, so they're safe. But we do our own imaging, like once they're, once they're in, in production. One thing that we're really investing in is central management, so like when a computer has a problem, it can just be quickly imaged from central.
Seeing no further, excuse me, Director Patu.
Now, is this only for high school or is it also middle school?
This is for high school.
All our high schools?
All the high schools are getting funds for technology. This is part of what's being spent, the ones who have turned in their plans, and there's other technologies other than just computers. This is the part that's the computers.
When you say turn in their plan, is that the high schools is responsible for turning in their plan in order for them to get?
Yes, yes. We want, one, part of our model that we're developing here, and this is the first part that we're experimenting with, is we want schools to have the autonomy to pick what they want to augment their technology, but we want it to be tied to their CSIPS. So they need to turn in, they need to explain how their technology is supporting their instructional program.
So if they don't come up with a plan, what does that mean? Does that mean that they don't get any computers?
We're helping them come up with plans, so.
So what are you doing to actually, to make sure that they hear that loud and clear, that they have to have plans in order for them to be able to get computers?
So this is work that we've been engaged with the high school principals for a period of time in terms of the high school revisioning, and so this is in direct support of that. What's unique about this as well is, you know, a lot of times we will have schools or teachers participate in professional development when they use the technology, but then they get back to their classroom and they don't have the technology to actually apply that new learning. And then there are other times we apply, we provide lots of technology, but then they don't have the professional development to know how to effectively use it. In this case, we put those two together. The teachers have actually received the professional development necessary to apply in their instructional practice and the resources to follow through on that.
Thank you. Okay, speak now or forever. Roll call, please.
Director Burke?
Aye.
Director DeWolff?
Aye.
Director Geary?
Aye.
Director Mack?
Aye.
Director Patu?
Aye.
Director Pingam?
Aye.
Director Harris?
Aye.
This motion is passed unanimously.
Thank you. We are on D, introduction items. Number one, 2018-19 legislative agenda. This came before Exec October 11th for, says consideration. Approval of this item would adopt the 2018-19 legislative agenda as attached to the board action report. Who will be presenting, and I'm counting on Directors Geary and Mack for backup here? Deputy Superintendent Stephen Nielsen, take it away.
Good evening, Directors. This follows Board Policy 1225. We put together a legislative agenda every year. This is very similar to what we've done in prior years as is, the challenge from Olympia has not changed too much. We have vetted these items through with several of our legislators and to test whether or not we are on the right page in terms of possibilities in Olympia. It's a short document. It provides us opportunity to be flexible in Olympia and still retain and make momentum on funding.
Anything to add to what's already in the bar, Directors Geary and Mack, that we didn't cover in committee reports? Thank you, sir. Number two, approval of?
Director Mack, did you want to say?
I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
I, I guess I just want to say that I feel like this overarching legislative agenda is very responsive from a clear perspective of what our overarching goals are as well as some detail about specific policies that we can push forth, and appreciate staff's work on that and want to make sure that if anyone, any directors have any questions about those priorities, we'd be happy to answer those.
Director Geary, Director Burke?
The only other thing I wanted to say about this is that this is a legislative agenda. It allows the district to act independently in responding to the list of proposed legislation that's going to just start flowing in over the months that the legislators are in session. But there are going to be many topics that will come up and many proposed pieces of legislation that our staff will also continue to respond to. So it's not as if though this is the beginning and the end when there's going to be more out there. But this allows for a lot of guidance without having to check back in all the time. So it's a very useful document. It doesn't capture everything, of course, all of our hopes and dreams, but it is, it's necessary and useful to our staff.
Director Burke?
This is a sort of an alignment question. Under the second one, fund capital facilities, projects, and remove barriers to address needs, one of the topics or questions that I've, I've asked staff a couple times is around skill center funding. It's something that's a state capital request. You essentially have to create a 10-year plan and then do sort of incremental asks against it. And it's, it's a dynamic of, well, we can only get money in certain places. Do we get it for capacity? Do we get it for condition? Do we get it for skill center? And so does, the way this is itemized, does that preclude us from having the conversation around figuring out how to get onto a 10-year skill center cycle?
No.
Thank you.
Can I, can I expand on that?
Go ahead, Director Mack.
Thank you for the very, very direct, clear answer of no. I, to expand on that, though, one of the things that we're working on in the operations committee is updating our policy around facilities master planning. Right now, we have a policy that does levy planning, which is really focused around one funding source, and there's lots of other funding sources that, well, there's not, but there might be lots of other funding sources that we should consider. I know, I'm sorry, that's really funny. At any rate, this legislative agenda does not preclude us from looking at planning more comprehensively for skill centers and also pursuing those dollars, and I think that folding that into the facilities master planning process that's going to be coming up again in a year is, is a piece of that, so.
Number two, approval of the Washington State Auditor's, SAO, annual audit services contract for the 2017-18 fiscal year audits. This came before A&amp;F October 8th for?
Then to save time, this item plus items two, three, four, and five for approval.
Thank you, sir. Approval of this item would authorize the superintendent reimburse the Washington State Auditor's Office for its services up to the amount of $348,000 for the district's 2017-18 fiscal year audits. This is a compliance piece that we can't say no to. Is that correct, Assistant Superintendent Joel Lindberg?
Correct.
Thank you. We don't get to negotiate it either, do we?
No.
Comments, questions, concerns from my colleagues? Seeing none. Number three, approval of elevator maintenance and repair contract extension with LTAC for the 2018-19 school year. As reference came before A&amp;F October 8th for approval, approval of this item would extend the current elevator maintenance and repair contract in the amount of $285,000 with LTAC for the 2018-19 school year. Assistant Superintendent Dr. Flip Hernan, take it away quickly.
Indeed. So proposing, this is proposing an extension of the current contract with LTAC Systems, and LTAC has been our vendor for the last three years and has the state contract. So basically, they have a contract with the state to do elevator repair. The contract is under the terms and pricing of the master state contract 00713 for elevator maintenance and repair. The state contract was just renewed. The contract amount has not increased. It's the same amount as last year's contract of $285,000. The contract is for quarterly maintenance and repair. Quarterly maintenance is required to maintain elevator license through state labor and industries, and we currently have 133 licensed elevators or lift in the district. So I hope this brings this down to ground level for everybody.
Oh.
I had to put one, you know, I didn't want to get a rise out of you, so.
Comments, questions, concerns, or retorts from my colleagues? Director Burke?
I was going to try to do a joke, but you one-upped it. I just wanted to say that before I sat on the board, when I was just a mouthy person that stood behind the podium?
Just?
And had a chance to meet with senior staff around a topic like mathematics, I got stuck in the elevator, the one that has the sign on it right now, and that was a real downer, so that's it.
Other substantive comments, questions, concerns, or retorts from my colleagues? Seeing none. Number four, adopting new board policy 5222, job sharing and repealing board policy and procedure F12.00 and F12.01, job sharing. Again, came before A&amp;F October 8th for approval. Approval of this item would transition a policy about job sharing from the old lettered series to the numbered 5,000 policy series and make edits that align with WASDA model policy. Is this a cleanup?
It's slightly more than a cleanup, so.
Please tell us how.
Yes, so Assistant Superintendent of HR, Clover Cud. Thank you. So the revision is based in two parts. One is to transition from the letter policies over to the number, and then the other is we wanted to take the Model WASDA policy and align our policy to that. Our original policy is one sentence. It is the policy of the Seattle School Board to permit job sharing in accordance with administrative procedures, provided that in no case should the cost of the district of a shared position be greater than the cost of a regular position. So what we have done is we've maintained that, the edits are consistent with that one sentence, but then we took some of the Model WASDA language and added for specificity reasons, reserving the authority to determine the number of job-sharing positions, require employees to develop a written plan when they're in a job-sharing situation, and also to dissolve any job-sharing assignments at our discretion. So we add a little bit more specificity to the policy. And so for your reference, you've got the Model WASDA policy here as an attachment, so you can see that we literally copied and pasted the language we liked from theirs and stuck it into ours.
Did you wish to speak to this, Director Pingam?
I just want to add that this was one of the items that we had some good discussion on during our A&amp;F meeting around, you know, how much of FTE will, do we divvy it up? So there was good conversation, and .4, .25, how low do we go? And then what if the position is like a 1.2 FTE? How do we handle that? So I appreciate discussion with my fellow A&amp;F.
Yeah, so that, oh, yeah.
Director Mack and then Dr. Cud.
Yeah, I really appreciated this came in front of the committee a couple different times to have a robust conversation around it. I'm just looking over the language here, though, and I, could you, because we had a robust conversation around the point X FTE limitations, and I think we had agreed to, you had agreed to some language that was slightly different than the original, and I'm not sure where that showed up.
So that, you're actually talking about the superintendent procedure. That's where that language was. So I did make edits to the superintendent procedure based on just feedback, and so even though you all are not voting on the procedure, it's here for your reference. So you'll see in the redlined version of the superintendent procedure that we did talk about, not, should not be less than .4 FTE. You'll see that in the procedure.
Right, and that's because of the severe challenges of somebody who maybe only wants to work one day a week, and that just doesn't make any sense. So, thank you.
Director Burke?
Is this, is this something that is a valuable tool for you in the attract and retain realm? Or is it something that's just sort of expected?
I actually don't have data to say if this policy improves our retention of employees. I don't have any data on that, but it is a tool that principals and program managers use to be able to make sure that they are, sometimes it is to help keep employees who would like to go part-time but not work full-time. So it doesn't happen, I mean, we do have, we do have a lot of job shares, more in elementary schools than we do in secondary, but you know, it's a tool that we have and we want to keep that tool.
Thank you.
Okay, then. Number five, replacement for educational programs and operations levy, resolution number 1819-2. This came before A&amp;F October 8th for approval. Approval of this item would accept the proposed replacement for educational programs and operation levy and adopt resolution 1819-2, which places a three-year levy totaling $815 million on the February 12th, 2019 ballot as attached to the board action report. Take it away, Joel Lindberg.
Right. We're seeking replacement of our educational program and operations levy in the amount of $815 million over three-year period, which would start with collections in calendar year 2020. By way of background, this is a change in name for the levy, which was formerly known as the Maintenance and Operations Levy. The name change is to reflect new legislative language and to more clearly describe levy use. The current operation levy provides approximately 19% of our revenue. The current levy and the future levy, if approved, pays for items including but not limited to special education and English-language services, transportation, and remaining unfunded salary allocations for principals and classified staff. We are requesting more levy authority than concurrently be collected under law with the hope that legislative action will restore some of our lost levy funding and provide additional funding to our district. Under the new legislation, our per pupil amount that can be collected is $2,500 per student, which compared to a 1718, which compares to a 1718 amount of $4,100 per student. In 2020, the first of our three-year levy, if approved, we are requesting approximately $271.3 million with the current law limiting that collection to only $138 million in 2020. So stated another way, legislative action during the 2019 legislative session would be needed to collect more than $138 million or the smaller $2,500 per pupil amount. The amount being requested of $271.3 million would result in a rate of $1.005 per thousand of assessed valuation per our current estimates. The amount currently allowed under law, so the $138 million that we could currently collect, would result in a rate of 51 cents per thousand in 2020, both of which, I would note, are lower than the 2018 rates that our taxpayers are paying, which is an estimated dollar, $1.10 per thousand. I believe these points address the questions and clarifications requested by the A&amp;F committee members that they asked me to do. that they asked me to do at introduction, and I would conclude my remarks.
Thank you. Questions, comments, concerns? Director Pinkham?
Thank you, Burke, you know, for addressing the concerns that were brought up at A and F. One of the, again, things that I was really, that we make sure that that title includes replacement. This is a replacement levy, but you just, the amounts that were restricted now by current law. Some of the people in the audience were commenting, you know, why can't we go for a $1.4 billion levy? Well, law says we can't request that much. So having that clarification and going over the numbers again about how much we're asking per $1,000 of assessed value, I feel has helped provide clarity to what we're asking for. And by requesting basically our maximum that we can right now, and then scaling down as whatever we see as the legislator allows us to collect. So I just, again, want to thank you and my, again, my fellow A and F committee members for their input.
Other comments, questions, concerns? I hope we lead with that in the marketing of this levy. I think it's going to be really critical, and I know you're already working on it, and I appreciate it. Director Mack?
I think I just want to say again, now that there is a public hearing here tomorrow at 7:00 for this levy and the Bex levy, just to let folks that might be watching know again that there is a hearing.
7:00, come on down. Number six, approval of facilities master plan update 2018 for Bex 5 capital levy. This came before Ops October 4th. Approval of this item would approve the facilities master plan update 2018 per policy 6901. This update to the master plan informs the board on capital needs district-wide in facilities that help to deliver and support the educational programs as stated in the district's mission. Dr. Hernan, take it away.
Thank you. As has been stated, part of preparation for the Bex or BTA capital levies is taking a look at our facilities master planning. The board and operations chair has been working very closely with staff to update this process. We've had quite a bit of work happening, both with staff, getting information from enrollment services, and obviously having a new task force that was established over the summer that gained valuable amounts of input from community and other sources. We also have integrated into this, which you will also see reflected in number seven, the Bex capital levy, the policy 0030, which previously was not as visible on the capital side. So with the board guidance and support of resources and dedication of time, I think we've really made our first really public and explicit opportunities of highlighting the recent equity board policy into this capital side. So in this particular case, approval of this facilities master plan is a major component of what we're looking at for the capital levy for Bex 5, which we are hoping to go out in February of 2019.
Comments, questions, concerns from my colleagues? Director Mack?
I want to express extreme gratitude to the staff that has worked diligently on pulling together this update. There is extensive information in here that is in addition to, I believe, the, well, the 2012 and the 2015. And including the addresses for buildings is in here now, which helps us clarify what building we're talking about when we change names of schools frequently, as well as demographic information. The City of Seattle and Seattle Public Schools work that was done around the kind of enrollment planning projection work with the partnership agreement, as well as the MANG report that was done in 2014, and the most recent McKinstry report that provides a lot of good information about what our real building needs are. And I, I think it's really important to point out that our building needs in terms of really having quality learning environments for students are far exceeding what we can actually afford to put onto this next levy. And that documenting that, as is done in this document, is really helpful, I think, to our process of trying to identify, okay, so then what's next? And how do we actually start really making a big dent in the challenge? And I think we're, we have the opportunity to do that with this next levy. But I encourage anybody to actually read this document. It is very, very well-done and comprehensive. And very useful, I think, to us as a board.
Director Burke?
This might have come up in conversation, but I was trying to read it at the same time. Does this incorporate all of our recent conversations around the equity scoring and the re-norming? I see some tables in there. Are those current vis-a-vis that scoring process?
I believe they are. I'd have to double-check, though, to make sure. And I can definitely do that between intro and action to make sure that everything is the most up-to-date scoring methodology.
I can comment that when this came to Ops and it was discussed, there was, that was one of the points, and you were there as well, that the spreadsheet and all of that information may need to be updated. I also saw that there was a link in there, a typo. So I think there's probably a little bit of cleanup that might need to be done.
Director Gary, and then Director Pinkham?
I want to thank Director Mack and the staff at operations for all the work that went in this. And I want to thank the people who came today and testified and said, really urged us to go out for as much of a levy as we think we can do, because for a long time, we limited that conversation to the $1 billion mark. And we've moved substantially beyond that, and we've weighed the potential risk of doing that. But I think we need to remember that our economy is so strong, and we have a tax system that really favors people of affluency in this city, in this state. And so we are a world-class city, as somebody said, and we deserve world-class schools. And so I feel really comfortable that we can justify this, we need to justify this, and our city needs to step up and support this and make sure that they are sending their children to really welcoming, inspiring buildings. And I know, having looked at all the schools that have opened the last two years, that we can do that if we're given the resources. And I would invite anybody who has any doubt whatsoever to go visit any one of our new schools and see how good they feel. And then visit any of these that are on this levy and ask yourself, doesn't every student deserve a building that is inspiring? So thank you so much for your work.
You're welcome.
Director Pinkham?
Yes, thank you for your work. And I do need to bring up another issue that's here, again, making the visible visible. Reading the growth, what the, I missed the operations levy meeting, or the operations meeting, because I was on travel. But we talk about all the major ethnic groups, but again, Native Americans are not seen here. We got data on them, but when we talk about growth trends, we talk about white population, Asian population, Hispanic, but no mention of the Native American population. We described the city. We talked about it being the home to Amazon, Nordstrom, and Starbucks, but no acknowledgement of the land that we're on. Can we please include that? And if there is no change in our Native American demographics, again, include it so we know that we are acknowledged, that we're here when we see the data that's shared.
Duly noted.
Was that a nod in agreement that that will be changed before action?
Yes, well, I'm taking the notes on that and making sure we can include that.
On 13.
Okay, last but not least, again, many and extreme thanks to the staff. Director Mack, Yeoman's work, huge lift. Thank you for that. And to the advisory task force. We had some of the best minds in this city helping us, and I think it's a model for how we can put together task forces and show the kind of leadership that we're capable of. And I think the results are here. Thank you again. Okay, number seven, Building Excellence, Bex 5 Capital Levy Program and Authorizing Resolution 2018-19-6. Came before Ops October 4th for. Approval of this item would adopt resolution 2018-19-6, which places a six-year capital levy totaling $1.4 billion on the February 12th, 2019 special election ballot for voter approval to fund the Building Excellence Bex 5 Capital Levy Program.
Okay, so we've had a lot of conversations about this topic, obviously. I think a total of 10 work sessions with the board on top of several community meetings. I do have a very quick PowerPoint that we can go through quickly. It's high-level, just to kind of recap the work that we've done recently, and I'm not going to read bullet-by-bullet, line-by-line.
Is this on the web and/or part of our meeting uploaded documents, sir?
No, it was not.
Shame on you.
I think it's important to have a very simple, especially since we're televised, and this is introduction, so for the public to.
And I appreciate that, but we've got to get that in the queue, so it's part of the web. Let's go ahead and do that now, but duly noted, yeah?
Yep.
Thanks.
So here we have, this is part of policy 6901, which we're following for capital levy and planning. You can see we've updated and added to master plan utilization and looked at building systems and repairs off of the facilities condition assessment report done by McKinstry. Next slide, please. Had several work sessions. The board guiding principles were adopted in May. You can see the feedback that we've been able to go through and you continue to receive, even at the board meeting tonight. Okay, next slide. Categorization here and the scale of one to five. We've talked quite a bit about the equity analysis and how that's gone through a couple permutations. Okay, next slide. So this is in here, we have a summary of the Bex 5 project list. And we've been utilizing several aspects to come up with the project list available. We took into account both board and community feedback. Next slide. So the grand total, $1.4 billion, is the particular ask in this situation, of which you can see almost $800 million go into building capacity and condition projects. We do have money outlined to assist with possible property acquisition and infrastructure planning. You have almost $130 million going to building systems, repairs, and replacements. We also have maps that show what that distribution looks like. Those are available in the back of the room. And then $40 million for one-off projects, 10, almost 8 million of which is identified for school safety improvements. Additionally, we have $30 million in major preventive maintenance. I think we pointed this out before, that that was a change in state law previously to be able to use capital dollars for these projects. Otherwise, maintenance projects come out of the operations side of the house, and that competes with curriculum, staffing dollars, which is really a challenge. So that change in state law was certainly welcomed. In addition, both the major preventive maintenance, the major and one-off projects really helped bring down our backlog of maintenance overall. And we've made quite a dent in that in the last five or six years through the capital levies passed, both Bex 4, BTA 4, and now Bex 5. There's also $151 million for technology projects and 12.3 identified for academics and athletics. So we're here tonight. We have the meeting, our regular board meeting. We have a special meeting tomorrow night, which is just basically public comment section where members of the public can come and comment on the levies, both levies, operations, and this capital levy.
And will you have these documents available for the public?
Yes, we'll have them available tomorrow.
And how are we going to get this information uploaded to the web so that it is visible and transparent?
So there are two pieces on this that we have to make sure that any, if we have this, I think this is just mostly text, it should upload fine. We shouldn't have any ADA requirement. We usually have problems if we have tables. So we'll scan this for ADA compliance, and then we can upload that.
And where will it be found for those that want to look back at this?
So for this particular slide, we'll put it both in this as part of the agenda for this meeting, and we'll also include it in the levy webpage that we have, the capital levy webpage. So then that way, it's into location.
Thank you.
You can see our hope is introduction tonight with probable hopeful action on October 30th. Absolute drop-dead deadline is December 14th, but there's only a board meeting on December 5th. But we're hoping we don't have to go that far with the final special election happening on February 12th, 2019.
Comments, questions, concerns? Director DeWolff?
Thank you for all the hard work on this. My question is, so we've, particularly in the community, have talked a lot about maintaining, keeping and maintaining Raynor Beach on the list. Even so far, saying, I think it's number one, it's going to be priority top. The way that the refined equity scoring has it, has it's been updated, Raynor Beach kind of is farther down on that list. So I guess I have a couple of questions. That doesn't necessarily, does that risk its completion if it's farther down that list, or are we going to just? Okay, my second thing is, is it under the approval and authority of our governing body to move Raynor Beach High School to the top of the list of, basically, what's the first thing we're going to do for construction? Can we do Raynor Beach first, or do we do it in the order of North Gate?
Yeah, so there is attached to this kind of a sequence of projects. So for a couple of the projects that have to be located off-site to an interim site, there is a timing associated with those. Most of these projects, Raynor Beach being one of them, we can actually build side-by-side. So they don't have to move to an interim location. The only challenge we have is just the financing of when it comes in. So, but we can, we can figure that piece out. By the time this goes out, everyone will know what the sequence is, which projects are happening in which years.
And the sequence is not part of the levy language, correct?
Correct, correct.
Thank you. Director Mack?
Right, and is that, do we call that the interim plan? What's the name for that? Because I, transition plan?
So the transition plan is really just in place for the schools that are being impacted and have to transition from one place to another, if we have to figure something out. Other than this, this is just the sequencing of the projects. So that's, we want to figure out which projects we can do. And some of that's based a little bit on the size of the bids. We've got to figure out from the community whether or not it makes a difference if we're going out for one sooner than the other. Obviously, Raynor Beach is a big project. It's a high school. It's more square footage. It's a huge piece on that. So we'll get a sense. I'll be talking with the capital department to figure out if there's a sequence that makes more sense than another. But correct, it's not part of the actual ballot language to say this one's happening first. Obviously, we'd love to get to Raynor Beach at the top of the list.
Director Mack?
Speaking of the capital, the capital department, I just want to give a huge shout-out to Richard Best and the team there, because amazing, and I really appreciate all the work there. And to the question around, like, which project comes first and interim buildings and looking into the future, this is something that we probably want to keep in our minds, is that these are likely going to trigger further boundary conversations that we're going to need to get into for these schools in the future, because we are adding permanent seats, and there may be needs to shift some things around. So the boundary conversations are going to continue in the future.
Director Burke?
Thanks for the presentation. Two kind of fine granularity questions, and then one in general. For, we've heard from the community in Sacagawea, and we've got a site improvements line item. Has it been defined what is within that? Because I know there's previous conversation around sprinklers, there's current conversations around. previous conversation around sprinklers, there's current conversations around playground and ADA. Has that been
Yeah.
formalized?
I think at the work session, we talked about site improvements are usually dealing with either playground asphalt or parking lot issues. So that's what we look at at Sacagawea. I believe for Sacagawea, it's improvement in playground asphalt, but I want to make sure I double check on that, so that next time I can tell you for sure. But I believe that's what the site improvement is for Sacagawea.
Perfect. And then the other one to check on, we've heard from the Jane Addams community, also interested in, in site improvements. And it's not clear to me whether that they are or are not included in this list, if that's something you could follow up on.
I will definitely follow up on that and let you know by
And then just to generalize that comment, if there are schools that are kind of in that, didn't quite make the cut, you know, we've heard from North Beach, we've heard from Whitman, if you can share what is our commitment as a district, either in this levy or outside this levy, to make sure that those students have a healthy and supportive educational environment. I won't pin you down on it now, but I'd love if that's a message we can say loud and clear when we approve, and also when we're going out for vote.
We'll certainly make sure we have a, as accurate a statement as possible to be able to respond to that question.
Director Mack.
Yeah, two other things that I wanted to raise. One is the, the line item, short and intermediate term capacity portable management for $6 million. My understanding is that, that estimation previously was smaller, and that it was increased because we have an intention to replace the old portables that are toxic with oil burning and moldy, et cetera, and that we want to do that in short order. And that's one thing that we're planning to do as soon as we can do it.
That's correct. That is one of the items. We do have outdated portables that don't actually have basically like a SKU number on them, which means you can't move them. So if we have a portable that's so old that it can't be moved, there's a good chance it would be on the list for a replacement.
Excellent. And the other question I have around the line item called property acquisition and infrastructure. Is this 30 million, this line item also includes, like, our future planning needs?
Correct.
So our continued planning needs around the facility's master plan, potential 12th high school, other, other continued planning for our, our facility needs.
That's correct. We want to make sure we have an appropriate resource to be able to move as quickly as possible with any future plans that we might need to have, and not have to wait for another levy to get funds for that.
This also includes the Fort Lawton property?
It could indeed.
Potential purpose purchase?
Could indeed.
Thank you.
We didn't want to do an exhaustive list, so we, that's why we kind of have it as property acquisition and infrastructure planning.
And, and for clarification for folks in the public, that, that just because something hasn't made it onto the list, at this point, the planning hasn't necessarily stopped. There's still, you know, we, we still need to continue moving forward with
That's correct.
Yes.
Does the property acquisition also address the need for warehouse space and/or bus parking?
It's possible that that could be
That's one of the variables.
Correct.
Okay.
And obviously, all those items would come to the board. Those are above $250,000 items.
Can't buy a house for less than 250 in this town.
That's correct.
Any other comments, questions, concerns? Thank you very much. And again, take it back to your staff, that we
Absolutely.
are so grateful and thankful.
Thank you for your support.
Okay. Number eight, repeal of Policy 2023, classroom use of electronically accessible materials and approval of new policy 2023, digital citizenship and media literacy. CNI, October 5th, for
Approval?
Approval of this item would repeal Policy 2023, classroom use of electronically accessible materials, and replaces it with the new policy 2023, digital citizenship and media literacy. The new policy updates policy guidance regarding digital citizenship and media literacy, and moves on other references to safety supplemental materials, curriculum, and online learning to Policies 2024, 2022, and 2015, which have pending updates. Associate Superintendent Michael Tully, take it away.
Yes, this action, of course, is in response to change legislation that prompted upgrades to policies and procedures around digital citizenship and internet use and safety. The policy as drafted actually provides a general terms definitions for digital citizenship and media literacy. We did use the WASDA template policy to develop this policy, and we will also use the WASDA template to develop the procedures that will accompany this to provide additional guidance as to how we would provide instruction for our students. Also note that the current policy 2023 that was mentioned, classroom use of electronically accessible materials, that policy will actually be, as noted, incorporated into Board Policy 2022, and be brought back to the board for consideration.
Comments, questions, concerns from my colleagues? Director Mack.
Do I have the correct version? I'm not seeing a redlined version here, and I'm kind of confused, because what I'm seeing is the exact policy, so I don't see where we have changes being proposed. Am I missing something? I don't know if this is the link, but all I see in the bar is the existing 2023 policy, and the existing 20, 2023, they both say the same thing, and I don't see a redlined. I'm a little confused.
And they're both dated 2011.
And they're both dated 2011. So I don't know if there's been a mistake on the posting of this, but this is, I don't know what I'm looking at.
Director Burke.
I'll, I'll try to get this right. So this is a bit of a, of a kerfuffle, because we're changing, we're using the same number. We're repealing one policy with that number, we're putting another policy on top of it with that number, and so the media literacy or classroom use of electronically accessible materials is being repealed, and then digital citizenship and media literacy is a new policy that is being adopted on top of that, and that's why there are no red lines.
Yeah, at the bottom it does say that. And then also, I'm curious to know what the WASDA model policy 2023 is in relation to this, and how it's, how this
This, this document started as the WASDA policy, but that would be, if you go back into committee materials, that's where you could find the red lines from the WASDA to this. But I think those didn't come all the way to the board.
I think that's asking a bit much, for folks to have to dig through committee materials in order to determine what their vote's going to be, to get that figured out. Is there a way we can reconnoiter this to make it more transparent, both for the board and also for the public?
I just, I want to push back just a little bit.
Please feel free.
Typically, when we do red lines, it's from policy to policy. It's not from WASDA to policy. Whereas what was done at the committee level was from WASDA to policy. It was from a template to a current policy. That was committee work that was discussed over two different committee meetings. And so I'm happy to take that offline, but I, I don't feel particularly comfortable putting WASDA policy language in as if it were native board work, and doing it as a red line to say this is what we've changed, because I think that's a finer level of granularity.
I, I think it may be Noel's the person from a legal perspective and process perspective, because what, if we're repealing the one, but it's got the same number, but you don't technically take the entire text from the first one, redline it out, and put the new text in, then to me it doesn't, because we're not repealing the actual policy, we're completely replacing the language. So to me, the redline version that should be present here, so that you can see it, is redlining out all the old language, and then the new language is there. And then the WASDA model policy would just be for information sake, not necessarily showing the red lines or not, but would be helpful to see what WASDA was, was suggesting. Just to clarify, I guess, the first one in this bar is what exists now, and the second one is what we're suggesting to be moved to.
Good evening, Noel Treat, General Counsel. Just to follow up on that question, what's really determinative is the language in the motion, not the attachments to the bar itself. And so the language in the motion that you'll vote on, hopefully at the next meeting, I think is pretty clear that you're, you're repealing the, the one 2023 with that, with its specific title, and adopting a new 2023 with a different title and different content. So at least for legal sufficiency, I think the bars as currently put together is adequate to accomplish what, what you're purporting to accomplish. But certainly, if there's other ways to show it, so it's more clear to other readers, I think that's fine. But I, I don't see a legal infirmity in the, the way this bar is put together.
I, I will acknowledge that the, the footer refers to the previous policy's date, but the content in the policy document, and the title, and the, and the number
On the second one.
On the second one are appropriate.
And it might be that on the old one, where you could put some kind of header, you know, propose to be repealed, or something to make that more clear. That might help.
Would that be objectionable to the Chair of CNI?
Not at all.
Would that be objectionable to Associate Superintendent Michael Tully?
Not at all. We can make that happen.
Okay. Director Pinkham.
Yeah, for me, looking at the two different, the current policy and the new one, the current one seems to put a lot of onus on the instructor. You know, the instructor shall do this. If the instructor fills this, the instructor shall inform. And, and another one, it just seems to be more the student's use.
Correct.
What happens to the instructors' then responsibilities?
So as I mentioned, that particular language will be actually incorporated into a new, a different policy 2022, which will be coming forward to, for board consideration at a later time.
Cross-reference.
Other comments, questions, concerns from my colleagues? Number nine, annual approval of programs of schools using the alternative learning experience model and review of Policy number 2255. Alternative learning experience, or ALE schools or programs, came before CNI October 5th for
Approval.
Approval of this item would accept the Cascade Parent Partnership Program, interagency academy school, the Nova Project High School, and middle college schools, as the district's ALE programs pursuant to the school board review conducted, agreed to make no changes to Policy number 2255, alternative learning experience schools or programs. Questions, comments, concerns? Surprise, I have one. It's one that we have talked about incessantly. Why we do not have continuous enrollment option or ALE schools as part of our enrollment processes is, again, an ongoing frustration. They're not service schools, they're option schools. We need to get rid of the pejorative language, and we need to recognize that all of our students are not widgets, and that these are good places where they can learn and be inspired. And I think that our poets this evening made that ever so clear.
I do agree.
Other comments, questions, concerns? Seeing none. Approval of courses with new content as defined by Superintendent Procedure 2026, came before CNI October 5th for
Approval.
Approval of this item would accept courses with new content, including an ethnic studies course that have been recommended by the board. Comments, questions, concerns? Director Mack.
I'm just wondering if we can get a quick summary. We are moving through these really quickly, and what are the courses that are being updated? Do we have a quick summary on what those are?
So this particular school, Superintendent Procedure requires that we bring to the board any course that has new course content. This particular procedure was put in place in 2011, and since that time, this procedure wasn't being followed appropriately. And we determined this past spring that there are a number of courses that have been developed and implemented between 2011, 2017, that did not, that may contain new course content, that did not come to the board for review or approval. We did err on the side of caution by saying, well, if we're not sure if it contained new course content, we put it on the list. So in the end, we have 215 courses that have been developed and implemented over the last many years. As you, if you look through the list of courses, you will see most of those courses are world language competency courses, so that we can award high school credit to students based on their assessment of competency on their home language. So you will see many, many courses listed for a variety of languages spoken within Seattle Public Schools. In addition, this policy also would allow us to formally approve ethnic studies as, with a course code. The Board Action Report does speak a little bit, give a little bit of background on the development of that course, and the course description for ethnic studies is attached to the Board Action Report.
Does that meet your concerns, madam?
Yeah, and I appreciate that the entire list is here. It's a lot of courses that didn't get approved. And like you said, a lot of them are actually the language ones. So I'm finally getting to the end, and I'm seeing things like ceramics. We didn't have ceramics prior.
So again, if, we, as I mentioned, we erred on the side of caution, and included courses if, if the ceramics was using new course content in terms of the way it was being taught, then we put it on the list if we weren't sure if it was done prior.
So I'm not seeing any major outliers of something that community members may come forward and be upset about. It looks to me like mostly language, mostly some art, music, ethnic studies is the one, and then that's essentially it.
That's correct.
Okay, great, thank you.
Director Pinkham.
Would this also allow students to maybe do college and high school remotely? Let's say someone wanted to go, I want to take a native language course from North West Indian College.
We would need to be able to assess the competency level of that student, and if there, if there is a way to do that, then possibly we can add that as one of the courses listed in the catalog, so that then we can award credit for it. But currently, I, I don't know of any native languages that are listed.
Yeah. And so, and it's just what popped up when we see all these languages being taught, it's just so heartfelt that
Yes.
we don't offer the, any native languages for students to learn. I wish I could learn my Nespers language while in school. It is offered over at Lewiston Clark College in Idaho, and I don't know if Buckle Shoot, if they're developing a Luchutseed class. University Washington's teaching Luchutseed now, so I would like to see that we include some kind of indigenous language.
Director Pachu.
So where can we actually see the content for ethnic studies?
There, there is a course description attached to the Board Action Report.
And it has all the courses that actually that are
Well, there's, there's just this one course that we are currently asking to be approved as part of this particular Board Action item. But, you know, what we are currently doing, of course, we do have task force, we have people working on it, units, that will be incorporated and piloted within our schools. That happened last spring, and we will continue to do that this year.
Thank you. I have a follow-up question. I, I heard, and probably out of respect, that it's Jesse Hagopian's ethnic studies class, and, and respect him greatly and deeply. This is more of a team sport, though, was it not?
Yes, absolutely. As I mentioned, the development of that particular course, and the process that went through review was pretty extensive. Lots of community-based organizational support, as well as some experts in the field actually gave input into a review of that particular course.
Thank you. Director DeWolff, did you have a question, comment, concern, sir?
Yeah, I don't know how, maybe this is too in-the-weeds micromanaging, but one of the things I tried to highlight in our conversation at the committee was just that, particularly as the themes under the course description, I, I was just trying to be thoughtful that particularly for native communities, land is also really important. So I don't know how to include that, but I think particularly as we think about that culture, that land is really important, too, as well.
Well, I can definitely give that feedback to the, the developers of that particular course. Well, I can definitely give that feedback to the the developers of that particular course.
Director Mack?
I'm sorry, I just kind of triggered on something. Why aren't the new science courses at high school in this one? Because they're named differently and they're broken up and they're slightly different content than, what is it, Chem A, Chem B, Phys A, Phys B?
That's correct.
That the whole conversation we've been having about that science curriculum. Aren't those new courses that need to be adopted?
They are. They are new course titles, but not new course content. The content was just reordered and by policy, that does not require board approval when we reordered the existing course content.
Does the Chair of CNI wish to add or respond?
I I've already spoken my mind on that.
Fair enough. Okay, then, moving on. Number 11, approval of contract to support the Open Doors Youth Reengagement Program for the 2018-19 school year came before CNI October 5th for. Approval of this item would authorize the superintendent to execute a contract with the Seattle Central College for a total not to exceed amount of $315,000 over fiscal years 2018-19 in the form of the draft agreement dated September 1, 2018 and attach to the school board action report with any minor additions, deletions and modifications deemed necessary by the superintendent and to take any necessary actions to implement the contract.
Yes, the Open Doors Youth Reengagement Program provides support to our students between the ages of 16 to 21 who have either dropped out or are not on track to graduate by the age of 21. This particular contract provides a partnership with Seattle Central College where they provide supports to our students and through preparation for GED. And once completing that, they can go on and take college-level courses. This particular contract is in the amount of $450,000.
So is this a ratification of a contract since September 1, 2018 has come and gone? Or I'm not understanding the summary here.
So my understanding is it it provides us the ability to allow those dollars to be provided to the college. This is in some cases considered flow-through dollars depending on the number of students that are being served. Then we can, these dollars can go directly to the Seattle Central College. Of course, we will return about retain about 7% of that.
Any other comments, questions, concerns? Director Pachu?
So when that's happening, are we as a district actually keeping track of these kids or actually that our students are going into that program?
We do. And in our partnership, we do request for data on the how these students are doing. And in fact, that was one of the requests made by the CNI Policy Committee was to provide some data on success and that was attached to the Board Action Report.
So this is not a new program, is it?
No, this is not a new program. It was actually initially implemented in 2016. And we have had students participating, but now the enrollment has grown to the point that it's above the $250,000 threshold. So now we're having to bring it to the board for approval.
And what's the success, what's the success rate on this program?
Again, if you refer to the attached document, you will see that it refers to the number of students that are being able to give a little bit of a snapshot as to 59.2% of the students taking college-level courses who are under GED. So that's a little bit of an indication of how well this how students are doing in this program.
Thank you. Director Pinkham?
So currently, this is just with Seattle Central College. Any opportunity to expand it to North Seattle, South Seattle Colleges for, or is this able to serve students district-wide? Are we busing students to South Seattle from?
This, yeah, students are able to be accessed this district-wide. And there is a separate program in association with Interagency as well as Seattle Central.
Can you expand on that just a little bit, Interagency and Seattle Central?
Correct. The Interagency actually were the first to implement a program based on this particular legislation, 1418, to where students as part of Interagency are accessing the GED program, preparation program and college-level courses associated with this particular basically program provided by the state.
Okay, thank you. Number 12, BACS 4, BTA 4, approval of the Value Engineering Report for the Daniel Bagley Elementary School Modernization and Edition Project. This came before OPS, October 4th for.
Consideration?
Approval of this item would help secure approximately $1,900,000 in state funding assistance for the Daniel Bagley Elementary School Modernization and Edition Project, the Office of Superintendent Public Instruction, OSPI, Form D 7. Application requires board acceptance of the Value Engineering Report and the architect's response and recommendation matrix. Dr. Herndon?
This one's pretty straightforward. We've gone through several value engineering reports before. This one's specific to Daniel Bagley. And I have not heard any concerns regarding this particular one. So if you have heard something I haven't or have any additional questions, I'd be happy to try and address them. Sure.
We get around. Any comments, questions, concerns? Director Mack?
I note that it's for consideration and I'm I'm honestly not remembering why we did consideration. I don't know if Director Geary has recollection. I'm trying to pull up the minutes so that I can refresh my memory. If there was a question that we had around, I don't I don't remember what it was, but we it doesn't say approval, so.
Okay, well, we have two weeks to figure it out and to get those questions in early and often so that we don't have issues on the dais. Director Pinkham?
So since we're looking again, state funding, I don't know if the amount ties into this. Do we have to provide the SCS? We'll be using this for 10 years. Is that going to be part of the deforms coming to to us?
That is part of the, as you go through the deform process. It's not part of this particular one, but this is just one of the steps to receive that additional money for the modernization. So that's that's what this one is. It's just it's the value engineering stage of that process.
But eventually, we'll have to say.
Correct, that we're using the the building for that particular purpose.
Okay, thank you.
Director Mack?
I want to give a shout out to Jennifer Lincoln, the new admin. She does amazing minutes. So I, the minutes say that we discuss some amendments around 29 different ideas, twos were accepted for the, I don't quite understand exactly what those amendments are, but I don't know that I see redlining in the document itself, so.
They were probably alternatives, maybe not amendments, because I don't think we had 29 amendments during the meeting. So they could have been alternatives for the project, but I can check with her to make sure.
You know, I do actually, I'm finally triggering and I apologize because we are getting late and we've gone through a lot today. It says that I requested additional summary and key findings. I think that it was that the clarity of what the recommendations were were really difficult to find in this really huge document and that having that in the bar of a very brief summary of what the key findings and recommendations were was helpful to the board actually understanding what this is without having to go through that huge document.
Director Burke?
I, my recollection is similar and I'm looking at the pages 11 and 12 of the bar, which is basically the matrix of what the recommendations were and what sort of a, what was acted on, what was, what response did we take as a district as a result of this value engineering? And I think that's, I'm not sure if it was part of the original one, but I, from my point of view, what's in pages 11 and 12 looks like it covers that concern fairly well.
Okay, can we agree to take a good, strong look at it in the next week? Get more information out, SPS directors? This is what we've determined. If anybody's got questions, comments, concerns, we get those in early so we don't have crazy on the dais. Does that work for everybody? I see consensus. Thank you. And and can you tell me what person came up with deform? I thought for years it was D E F O R M. I.
Yes.
Speaking of corny jokes.
It's a it's a good question.
Okay, here we go. 13, we're coming in on the homestretch, folks. OSPI Distress Schools Grant Award Architectural and Engineering Services Contract, P 1580 to Malum Architects, Inc., for the Co-Elementary School Classroom Edition Project. Came before OPS, October 4, for.
Approval.
Approval of this item would authorize the superintendent to execute a contract with Malum Architects for the Co-Elementary Classroom Edition Project in the amount of $1 million. Something's wrong with the typo there. That's an interesting sum. Is it 1,48, 1,148,000? Can can you help us out there, Mr., excuse me, Dr. Herndon?
Yeah, I'm pulling this one up right now. One, yes, 1,48,251.
Thank you. Plus reimbursable.
Correct.
Short context, please, sir.
This is for the addition for co-elementary. Again, this was part of the distress schools grant dollars that came to us from our legislative representative representatives in Olympia.
Questions, comments? Director Mack?
This item and the next item are all both distress schools grants. And if Mr. T. could come forward, one of the questions that I've been trying to get clarity around is that we have a policy that requires that we approve grants before accepting dollars. And in effect, these bars are that, both the approval of the grant as well as approval of the project and the dollars. But the language may need some clarity in the motion in order to to state that. Because we don't actually have these grants in terms of like the the full application coming to us prior to when it comes to us with the project. Can you, maybe you can explain it a little better?
Yeah, yeah, thank you. The the issue that was raised is whether we are clearly enough having a board action that accepts the grant, because there is a policy that requires board acceptance of grants. And then, of course, there's board policy that requires approval of contracts at this dollar value too. So to to better clarify that we're doing both in this bar, when you see the bar come back for action, the motion language will be a little bit different. And and I'm going to be adding a provision that also says that the board accepts and obligates the distress school grant funds for this contract. So I think with that, it'll clarify that you're.
And that would be on both 13th and 14th?
13 and 14, same, yeah, same issue, same solution.
Terrific, thank you. Questions, comments, concerns? Number 14, OSPI Distress Schools Grant Award Architectural and Engineering Services Contract, P 1579, to Malum Architects, Inc., for the Magnolia Elementary School Phase 2 Classroom Edition Project. OPS, October 4th for. Approval of this item would authorize the superintendent to execute a contract with Malum Architects for the Magnolia Elementary School Phase 2 Classroom Edition Project in the amount of $543,938 plus reasonable reimburse. Reasonable, right. Reimbursable expenses not to exceed $20,000 with any minor additions, deletions and modifications deemed necessary by the superintendent and to take any necessary actions to implement the contract. Questions, comments, concerns? Saying none. Number 15, BTA 3 and BTA 4, final acceptance of public works contract K 5076 with Sprint Turf LLC for the synthetic, not chrome rubber turf replacement at Old Van Assault and Whitman Middle School and field lighting infrastructure at Whitman Middle School Project. Came before OPS, October 4th for.
Approval.
Approval of this item would accept the work performed under the BTA 3 and. Excuse me?
I get all excited with final acceptance because the project's done and it's amazing.
You gotta hold your your excitement till I get this out, darling. Performed under the BTA 3 and BTA 4 funded public works contract K 5076 with Sprint Turf for the synthetic turf replacement at Old Van Assault and Whitman Middle School and field lighting infrastructure at Whitman Middle School Project as final. Questions, comments, concerns? Any from you, Dr. Herndon?
No, it was pointed out, the address of Whitman Middle School. We've checked on that. We'll update that for the final action.
Always happy to take constructive criticism.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Saying no further business, it is 8:48. We are adjourned.